I'd like to welcome everybody to Southbridge Town Council meeting, Monday, October 20th, 2025, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Moving on to agenda item number two, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Shenyer.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Excused.
Counselor Provost.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
And Counselor Montigny.
Present.
We have a quorum, we call the meeting order. Moving on to agenda item number three, Consider Accept, the minutes of October 6th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
motion by Shenyer, seconded by Dow. Any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of that meeting? Counselor Adams.
Just through you, Mr. Chair, on number 13 should be 8:01. Set at 8:01.
Newly noted. Any other additions, corrections, or deletions? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to Subcommittee reports. Department of Public Works. Counselor.
Nothing reported this time.
Education Human Services, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not had a meeting, but we will probably be having one maybe next Thursday.
General Government.
No report.
Planning and Development, Counselor Daniels.
No report.
Protectors of personal property, Counselor Ortiz is not here, he's excused. We will talk about the meeting, we had a meeting where the agenda items are going to be talked about, we'll talk about the vote at that time.
Mr. Chair, all the votes taken that night were in the form of the...
Sounds good. Moving on to Chairman's announcements. At this time, I would like to call for a moment of silence for a gentleman, Mark Carron, who is a town councilor, state representative, a husband, a father, and a friend to all. Served the town of Southbridge in various positions, and at this time, I'd like to call, in his passing, a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Moving on to number two. I would just, I found some outrageous information this week. Under the state receivership, they have now produced the lowest MCAS scores in the state. With that information, I look to the Commissioner Pedro Martinez, the new Commissioner. Give us our schools back, and please help us, because under Mr. Valar and what has been presented in the past, it's just not working. We need your help, Commissioner Martinez, and we're looking forward to working with you, because we have one way to go, up. I'd like to let everybody know that I got a phone call from Representative Massey before the meeting. The $25,000 was awarded to the town of Southbridge for the Marcos Rios Park. That's going to be a child recreation area. The volunteers are all excited. We're hoping to, I know the majority of what's going to happen is going to be in the springtime and next year, but I think that a lot of the volunteers want to get moving this year on some of the walls and various things that we have to do on the refurbishing of the bathrooms in the building. So it's full steam ahead, and I'd like to thank Representative Massey for working for the town of Southbridge on that $25,000. And finally, I would just like to say, Jack Jovan is on the mend. I have not been bothering him on any of the issues. Nora has been doing a good job as far as working with the department head, working with the council, to hold this together till Jack is fully healthy and comes back to work. Jack, I know you're watching, we prayed for you, our prayers were answered, now you're on the mend. Take care, and we'll see you soon. I'd like to move on to Town Manager's announcements. Nora?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to announce that the police collective bargaining agreement was ratified in executive session on October 6th, 2025. I just want to thank the union's negotiating team and our team, our town bargaining representatives, for their collaborative work throughout this process. I also wanted to let everyone know that the 2026 Medex plan rates have been received. We are seeing an 18.125% increase this year. We're also pleased to welcome two new members to the town hall, Jeanette Ramos Giacunto as the executive assistant to the town manager. She will be coordinating town council communications and supporting the operations of the town manager's office. Also joining our team is Gilmarie Ortiz Cabrera, the administrative assistant in the collector's office. She'll be filling a vacancy created by an internal transfer to the clerk's office following her recent retirement. We are actively in the interview phase for the deputy director of the public works position and expect to bring a recommendation forward to the town council soon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Moving on to presentations. There are no presentations here tonight. Moving on to Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the Southbridge Town Council on any issues that are not on the agenda? There is nobody at this time. We'll move on to agenda item number nine. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Ryan Morton of Spencer, Mass. as a full-time firefighter for the town of Southbridge based upon Fire Chief's recommendation upon successful completion of all rehiring paperwork.
So moved. Second.
Here's a motion, second of the Subcommittee, it was favorable. Chief?
The town manager wanted to say anything at this point, or no?
You can relax.
All right, thank you. Good evening, councilors. You've heard my spiel, most of you did last week at the PPP meeting, but over the last two weeks, I've been contacted by former firefighter, paramedic, Ryan Morton, who resigned from our department in November of 2024. After speaking with him about his desire to return and his discussions with the town manager and human resources extra, we all agreed that he would be rehired, it would be the best course of action. While working full-time at his other position and also continuing his work as a part-time instructor at the Massachusetts Fire Academy, he reflected on his time here and realized that leaving Southbridge was a mistake. Mr. Morton serving, he realized over the last five-plus years that he was with us, had a strong attendance record, and was dependable member of the department. He continues to reside in Spencer and is very eager to return. Mr. Morton is here tonight with his family. I don't know if he has anything to say, but at this point, it is all intents and purposes to put rehire Mr. Morton back to the Southbridge Fire Department.
Okay. Counselor Adams?
I just welcome you back. Thank you for coming back over here. Ryan and I had a lot of conversations a couple of years ago, and it's just glad to see him back in the uniform of Southbridge. Thank you.
Any other discussion, Counselor Shenyer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to thank Ryan for coming back to town and making application. I knew Ryan when he first came here a few years ago. I think he's a good firefighter, outstanding fellow worker. He was there when he was with the union, running the union, and I think with the continuing efforts of what's going on there, that he'll be an asset, and I look forward to seeing him come to town. Good luck.
Counselor Dow. Thank you, Attorney Chair, through you. Like I said at PPP meeting, thank you for coming back. It's a good sign, one of the firefighters left and coming back, because we hear a lot of rumor out there, councilor's not doing right, the town, and a lot of gossip. So that's a proof for a lot of in-house and out-house, Southbridge is number one. That's why when we see somebody coming back, we will support you all of it. Thank you.
Counselor Montigny?
Thank you very much for coming back. He's a stand-up gentleman, I've seen him in action plenty of times, happy to hear that you're back. Thank you.
I'd just like to comment, everybody was upset when you left, they were mad at you, and then the minute you wanted to come back, they embraced you. That's just the way Southbridge is. We love you, man, good luck, and be safe. Any other discussion by council? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Would you like to have a comment?
Just want to thank the town council, the deputy chief, the fire chief, acting town manager, and the town manager for this opportunity again. It's good to be home.
Moving on to agenda item number 10. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Brendan Hill of Watertown, Mass. as a full-time firefighter for the town of Southbridge based upon the Fire Chief's recommendation upon successful completion of all medical, physical testing, including passing the state physical assessment test, PAT, background checks, and state ethics training.
So moved.
Motion by Shenyer, seconded by?
Second.
By Adams. Chief?
Again, good evening, everybody. It is my recommendation that we offer an appointment to Brendan Hill as a full-time firefighter with the Southbridge Fire Department. Mr. Hill currently resides in Watertown, Massachusetts. As we know, many of our applicants come from out of town. However, Mr. Hill has been very clear and agreeable with relocating in Southbridge. During the interview process, he expressed his intent to move here, and I followed up with him again afterward to confirm that commitment. He reaffirmed that he plans to move to town. You heard at the PPP last week of his intentions also. Throughout the interview process, Mr. Hill conducted himself professionally, spoke clearly, and displayed a community-minded attitude, qualities that are essential for serving the public. He is active in his church community, serving as a eucharistic minister, and expressed a genuine desire to become part of Southbridge. Mr. Hill holds a bachelor's degree in business management with a minor in marketing from Quinnipiac College. He obtained his basic EMT certification in 2024 and is currently employed full-time with the Armstrong Ambulance Service. Additionally, he has been accepted into the paramedic training program at Pro EMS, beginning in January of 2026. While Mr. Hill has limited firefighting experience, his exposures to the fire service through his current EMT role has provided valuable insight to emergency operations of the fire departments. He has taken the initiative to learn about Southbridge, demonstrating a clear understanding of a fast-paced fire and emergency environment and genuine enthusiasm about becoming a part of a team. Upon completion of his paramedic certification, which should probably be around September of next year, he will be enrolled in the career recruit firefighter training program at the Mass Fire Academy, which is an additional 10 weeks. It is my intentions here tonight, with your acceptance, to appoint Mr. Hill to the position of full-time firefighter EMT pending your appointment.
Discussion, councilors. Counselor Shenyer?
Mr. Chair, this was unanimously approved at the Subcommittee meeting. Also during the Subcommittee meeting, Mr. Hill was asked about, as the chief stated, about moving into the area, and he stated that he hoped to be here in November, excuse me, by November, and I look forward to working with him in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Montigny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so this has nothing to do with the candidate, but the position and how it works. All the training that's involved, you're saying that this candidate cannot start working until a later date? Mr. Through, use of the Fire Chief.
So through the chair, so he can start work immediately, as soon as he gives his notice, appropriate notice to his full-time employment. He can come here to Southbridge, giving the timeframe which was asked at PPP, anywhere between four to six weeks from today could happen, because a medical, physical, all of those things need to be completed before he can actually get a start date. So in real instances, to answer your question, he could probably start probably around Thanksgiving time, just kind of looking how things usually flow for us for hiring an employee. He'll be oriented to obviously the fire station, the fire service, the men and women of the department, and then start working on, most likely, the ambulance at this point, because he is obviously a certified EMT.
Right.
So he will pretty much start. And then in January, the deputy and I were just talking about timing with Mr. Hill, but in January, his schedule for paramedic school will start. It's nine months, a little bit different than the programs that we have here locally here in Massachusetts, which is like 15 or 16 months. His is nine months, it's a little bit more intensive. We will work with his scheduling, he will be working here, we will work with his schedule to release him to go to school, and then he'll come back, and then when he's completed his paramedic degree in September, he'll be enrolled into the 10-week firefighter training program. So he'll be here during his paramedic training, on and off, depending on when his 24-hour shift's fit, but usually, was it Mondays? Monday, Tuesdays, and Fridays are his education day that he needs to be at school. So if he's working on Monday, he gets a Monday or Tuesday or Friday, he will get time off from work, go to his class, and then come back to Southbridge to work. So he is still going to be an employee. It's a little bit different than the way the police do it.
And a quick side note, thank you for that, the quick side note, how much money does that cost us? The school that he's already enrolled in doesn't cost us anything, and the 10-week program is something that we pay for every firefighter that needs it. Is that correct, or am I incorrect?
So through the chair, it is correct, the paramedic program, he's funded that on his own through some grant, I didn't even ask him, but that does not cost the town anything. And the Fire Academy recruit training program is free, it's just that they're not available to us during that 10-week period to work.
Thank you for that. And then last, you know, I heard that there were multiple, a couple dozen applicants for this position. You have a force at the fire station that expresses in public the dismay for the council and hiring, and out of the 20 applicants, you thought it was best to hire someone that really can't be fully invested and working. This is nothing against the candidate at all, I support the candidate. But that was your decision? When they're saying that we don't support, give me more guys, you're going to hire someone that isn't going to be there fully for you for almost 12 months? I just don't see how that's, how could there not be 19 other people that are satisfying what they say this council's at fault for? I do not believe that this council is at fault for any of the things that they're saying online. I think it has more to do coming from your office.
Through the chair. So as we vet through applications, there were 21 applications. The beginning part of that application process is, if you're a firefighter, we're going to let you interview. If you're an EMT, we're going to let you interview. There was a few people that didn't have either firefighter or EMT training, so we vetted those people right out. So initially, going into the process, we interviewed a peer interview process that was 18 employees, 18 people. Each employee, just like any job, that if you have a multiple amount of people, you get scored on your answers, and it actually works that it will give you, the ability for the people that are interviewing will give you, to see what type of employee that may potentially be for you. So after that 18 people were gone through, we ended up doing nine, eight employees in the hands-on training part of it. So the hands-on training, again, each skill station, there's a fire station and an EMS station, you get marked and you get scored on it. So we base everything on a score. At the end of the day, the town manager, Nora was there, and myself and the deputy, we took the top six candidates that scored the highest. Some people were within the 15 miles, nobody from Southbridge applied. So and then we interviewed them on the same, similar questions, all the same questions, in the best process, and Mr. Hill was, came in number two, but when I contacted the number one person, she withdrew from the process. This is the same process we've used all the time. I don't see it any favoritism in any way, shape, or form, and this is the way we do business, and that's where we're at today.
Well, thank you. My concerns come from caring about the firefighters' comments on the internet, and I will support Chief Normandin's recommendation to hire this gentleman as the solution to some of their problems that they air online. Thank you.
Chief, just a quick question. In the atmosphere of hiring, even if we turned around and said, "We're going to give you five guys," you're not going to hit the pavement for almost a year. Is that a fear or something?
Not for everybody, not for every employee. Some employees will come to us, or new employees will either have firefighter one-two training, or they'll have their EMT for a long period of time, or their paramedic degree, they would be moved quicker into the...
My point is, we have an opening here, and you've chose this gentleman, who's a fine gentleman, and he's not going to be hitting the ground fighting a fire till probably nine months from now. And if he is the best we got off the list, then everybody behind him has to be lesser candidate. I mean, that's the way I'm reading it. So it's not like we have tons of firefighters that are fully qualified to walk in the door and go to work. At least they're not applying. I don't know what the answer is to that, but I just wanted to ask that curiosity question, because never have we said no. The council has always moved forward for the best interests of the fire department, and I think we're going to continue to do that. But it was just a mixed message on this one, but we're going to move forward with this, and if it's a bump in the road, we'll continue to work with the bumps in the road. Counselor Shenyer?
I think, for me, Mr. Chairman, the important thing with Mr. Hill coming on board here in the Southbridge Fire Department is the fact that he is a rookie. He is coming here with little experience on the firefighters and the thing, so the bottom line is, he's going to learn it the Southbridge way. So he's not going to come in from Boston, per se, or Watertown, per se, and have already instilled on how they do things. He's going to come to Southbridge, he's going to work with the guys on shift, and he's going to learn the Southbridge way, which will make him, I think, a better firefighter and be a better employee for the community. Thank you.
Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Attorney Chair, through you. Thank you for applying for Southbridge. You're a young guy, you have a long future. We appreciate you coming here. The only thing I advise you, keep your attitude, don't carry other people's attitude, because that might affect you in the future. Thank you. Good luck.
Any further discussion? Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Chief, you conducted a fair process in hiring this candidate. I'm very confident of that, and this is a candidate that came up, came out, rose to the top. I trust your judgment as a professional, and I welcome this candidate to Southbridge. Thank you for applying, and I wish you the best in your career.
Any other discussion by any of the councilors? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present.
No, I'm just incredibly grateful for everybody on the council, the chief, the deputy chief, everybody on the department, for this incredible opportunity. I look forward to serving the people of Southbridge, and I promise to give my best every single day in the uniform. So thank you.
Vote to accept the redevelopment authorities' urban renewal plan, major adjustment. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Shenyer. Counselor, Subcommittee recommendation? Did he go to Subcommittee? No? Straight up? Good. Didn't waste any time on that, did we? Go ahead, Beck.
If I may request a friendly amendment to, instead of adjustment, it should say amendment?
Say that again?
Did you, was the motion, did you say adjustment or amendment? And if so, if it needs to be corrected, can there be a friendly amendment?
I would think amendment would be better, no?
Yes. Is that what it says, as amendment?
That's what I said.
I heard wrong, I apologize. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 12. Vote to accept the FFY 26 Municipal Road Safety Program Award of $26,000, and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second. Here's a motion, second. Discussion. If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 13. Vote to accept a donation of $50 from Gilbert Smalley. Do you allow the fire chief to use it in their discretion?
So moved.
Second. Here's a motion, second. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, this is unanimously approved by the Subcommittee, and the chief said he'll be right up if there's any questions.
Any questions?
I want to say thank you for, Mr. Gilbert Smalley, for the donation.
If not, those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 14. Vote to approve the fire department transfer request of $6,000 from account 001220-530000, Specialized Services, to account 001220524200, Data Processing, to cover the costs and data processing services for the fiscal year.
So moved.
Second. Motion, second. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, this is unanimously approved, and the, out of the Subcommittee meeting, it was to be understood that this wasn't an actual appropriation, it was just a bookkeeping error, so they're straightening that bookkeeping error out, and it's already money that's been appropriated.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 15. Vote to approve the fire department transfer request of $20,476 from fund number 0842, Capital Stabilization, to account 40022058530064220, Fire Communications Capital, to cover the costs of emergency replacement of public safety microwave link Elm Street to Black Mead Road Towers.
So moved.
Here's a motion, second.
So moved.
There's a large motion, second. Your recommendation?
This was a recommendation, was approved by the Subcommittee. The chief brought up to the Subcommittee the fact that the communication link is broken, they can't get no more repairs, those kind of things, and that this is going to fix it, and he gave documentation at that meeting and explanations.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council?
If this is the microwave upgrade, I am pretty certain that this is probably the only capital thing that we really need to do, to repair dispatch communications equipment in this town for the next five or six years.
It repairs what's, if you have a scan and you listen to these dead, they'll be talking, you don't hear something, that's because that system is failing. There's no repairs to be made to that system, so this replaces that system and should take care of that problem.
That's great news. Thank you, Counselor Shenyer, for that clarification.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to Councilor's Forum. Counselor Shenyer?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Provost?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I had reason to be admitted to Harrington Hospital in Southbridge recently, and first off, I want to thank people for their thoughts and their prayers and their well wishes. It's definitely appreciated. But the reason why I'm bringing it up is to mention that from the emergency room to the third-floor ward, the care was exquisite. I can't say enough about the doctors, the physician assistants, the nurses, the phlebotomists, the dieticians, everyone from top to bottom was top-notch, always had a great attitude, very positive attitude, and I know some people have issues sometimes with that place, but I don't. I was born there 68 years ago, and it's been good ever since. So I want to thank the hospital and the staff there that took care of me. I'm doing very well now, and I think it's because of them and their care, so I appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. I have a few, if you think, firefighter. I'd like to see Coleman. Since I came at the councilors, I keep asking the chief, "Why we don't have Coleman? Why we're not seeing Coleman? Why we're not hiring Coleman?" I don't get straight answer. Either no application, or either nobody move forward. We don't advertise it, we don't announce it. One week ago, I heard outside, one of the residents was in a place, and from in-house, firefighters was saying, "We do it on purpose, we're not hiring Coleman." It's not acceptable. I do not agree with it. I like to investigate that, go forward with why we don't promote it, why we don't advertise it, why we're not hiring Coleman. I used to be Coleman, seven years, I love to serve the town, I like to volunteer, I'm sure my kids... I like to volunteer, I'm sure my kids will, and I'm sure other kids. We like to give things for the town for free. We live in here, our heart is here. I don't see it, I don't see it. I see something wrong there. I don't know what it is, I can't accuse anything, but it doesn't look healthy. I hope the chief and town manager and the chair look to it deeply, because I don't believe nobody like to serve the town, none of the young generation.
Counselor Dow, we can bring that up at the next PPP meeting for discussion. I'll make sure it's on the agenda.
Thank you. Other thing, I'm sorry for the Karen family, Mark Karen, he used to be a not only friend, brothers, 28 years. When I came to this country, Mark Karen was state representative. At that time, I wasn't you. Anytime I called Mark, he picked up the phone regardless if I understand what I'm saying or not, regardless what I need for help, or many, many other people in residence of Southbridge and other towns. Mark is a great guy, his heart for everyone except for him. Mark, you're going to be missing. We love you. President, peace.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing tonight, thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, just a couple of things. I just sat and watched the school board the other evening, and was glad to see that they actually have high school representatives up there now speaking on behalf of the students of the high school. So it was really good to see that the school board looks like it's starting to move right direction, and the fact that you had two young ladies up there speaking eloquently about the school and some of the things that are happening. Another thing is, I appreciate the chair, Mona Silent, and what Counselor Dow commented on Mr. Karen, and then I will say I was very shocked, and you know, God rest his soul, and I will say, the last time, and actually Senator Fattman and I were talking yesterday about this, and the last time I really talked to Mark was when we went out to Arlington National Cemetery, and he was one to show up to every single funeral, and this guy drove all the way out to DC with his wife that day and spent the time with us, and I'll post a picture of all of us standing there over at the tomb of the Unknown Soldier, and it was, you know, the type of character he had, and his help with me on the state rep race and all the guidance he's given me over time, and the great conversations. I truly will miss that, and you know, my sympathies, my wife and I sympathies, go out to his family. Last but not least, Veterans Day ceremony is going on November 11th at 10:30 over at the World War Memorial Park. It'll go about for 45 minutes, and then we'll be heading over to the luncheon, which will be at the Wellsworth Hotel, and right now, we just sent off the, I was going to say the Veterans Council, take off one half, put on the other. The Veterans Council has sent off flyers to the veterans, and all, out of the 250 seats that are available, over half of them are taken already within a week. So we're looking forward to another amazing event on Veterans Day luncheon. So if you're a veteran out there, please, please RSVP, just don't show up, please RSVP. Thank you very much, that's all I got.
Counselor Montag.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, first, of course, everything to the Karen family, I'm so sorry for your loss. You know, I didn't really know Mark before I got elected, but as soon as I did, he sat me down, we had coffee, and he tried to give me as many pieces of advice as he could about council, about, he knew, he already knew who I was and that I was so bent on education, he tried to give me items that I could run with on education as like, literally like a first-week counselor, not even just my first year. And he even tried to give me a lot of good personal advice as well, and that always stuck with me. You know, it really stinks to lose a friend and a family member and a towns person, and it also stinks because every time I'd see Mark, we'd make a joke, and yeah, it's just not time for a joke anymore, it's too bad. But I'm on the flip side, I am happy to hear about Jack doing better from everything that he's dealing with, and I have to thank Nor Elgadere, thank you so much for stepping in, taking the call. It has been, it has been great. I appreciate you meeting with me. We talked about a few issues today, it was a really great conversation, big and small issues, the future, and you know, we're always just a phone call away while you're here, and we appreciate you being here in Southbridge. You know, I had some great discussion, I focused on Southbridge this weekend with the admins, and we were talking about an item that'll probably end appearing soon with the regional dispatch center, but what it comes down to is, there's a lot of misinformation out there on Facebook, and I appreciate the admins going, having a really long volley back and forth with me to really hash out at least the facts, so we can, you know, prepare for the debate. And it just goes to show how Southbridge really needs to be able to give the right information to the people ahead of time, and you know, people only know what you feed them, and about 15, 20 years ago, when Facebook and all these social media came out, it changed the way, back to caveman days, you go looking for the news, but today, finally, the news comes to you in the social media way. So if we can just find a way to provide, you know, the general public with more information on social media, nothing that needs to get in a conversation back and forth with the manager's office on social media, I'm talking just information, because it really took the better part of the whole weekend for us to hash out some of the facts, and I do appreciate the admins are focused on Southbridge for allowing us to do so. You know, it comes down to a question about whether or not we want to regionalize dispatch or keep it here and work with it, and the thing is, is what's sad about it is, it's not a lot of money that we're talking about saving or spending. And that being said, you wonder why it's such a huge conversation if it's not a lot of money to fix the problem, and it's because, just like everybody else in the area, we're up against the tax levy for our own reasons, and the reason is, you got to understand, we're coming up on our 10th year of school receivership. The chairman mentioned earlier that the return on that investment, which is the regionalization of the school district, and you can thank your chairpeople from 10, 12 years ago for working as hard as they could behind the scenes to get that state receivership, which has failed us, with the return on investment of the worst MCAS scores we've ever had, the lowest enrollment you can imagine, okay? And in the wake of this, there's an article coming out on the Telegram and Gazette about a sensory room that we're putting in. We used to have a crying closet at the high school, apparently, after I left, but now we have a sensory room, and it's not just, trust me, because I used to work with the autistic population for a better part of a year, it's not just for these kids, it's for kids with behavioral issues. So you're going to tell me that you might have a child that decides to swear his face off and disrespect the teacher and every person in the room, and they get to go upstairs into this room with a canopy bed and lights and stars and calming soothing music that allows them to go back to class? I couldn't even get through the first paragraph, but it is, I'm telling you, it's for behavioral students, it's not for just students that have like an actual physical disability. So what are these people doing? I want you to be aware that we've identified, here at this council together with the people at home, we've identified an easy $5 million in waste coming from central office before Dr. Villar exited, and it is totally within the power of the school district, the school committee if they had power, but the receiver to give money back to the town, which they have done in times where we really need the money. But if the state was paying attention, because I'll say it a little nicer than Chairman Lazo, we haven't had, I don't think the commissioner knows anything about our school committee or who they are. They told me just this week, when I spoke to the chairwoman the other day, that they have never met the commissioner still, and they're very eager to, and I, we do need your help, Mr. Martinez, but you're coming here 10 years, we need the schools back, it's just not working. If we have this much waste in the budget, this school, if the school committee was in control right now, they could give us money to balance this budget in any way possible. $5 million in waste, spend $3 million on the students the way they should have been spending it, and give $2 million back to the town, and now we don't even have a discussion about dispatch. You're having a discussion about it simply because, let me tell you, the property value has gone through the floor because of the state of Massachusetts and Chester Mitchell, and now our tax rate has skyrocketed, okay? It's all because families don't want to live here because the school system sucks. Now, we have the worst output and lowest enrollment ever, so it's time to get the schools back. Remember this, if you ever have a two-and-a-half override someday, and if you ever hear of a conversation about dispatch or any other department that you're trying to save a buck, it's because the schools failed you. The school committee failed you in 2012 when they voted to make one principal at a brand-new high school and ruin everything. Those two people got put on paid leave, the superintendent and principal. It's time to get the schools back, call your news stations, call your senators, it's done. I've had enough, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Moving on to 17, discussion next meeting day. Town councilor, go ahead, Counselor Montag.
November 3rd, 2025, 7:00 p.m. in these chambers.
Moving on to 18, motion adjourned.
So move.
Second.
They have motion second, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present, this meeting is adjourned.